Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming. Sarah McGinnis is on her way, but we can start on the rudimentaries, as Hazel says. So first of all, apologies for absence.
We've had apologies from councillor Webb and councillor Clark.
Thank you. Secondly, declarations of interest, anybody? As and when? All right, thank you. And at this stage, I was going to ask if everybody would like to introduce themselves, but suddenly I've got nobody there. So we'd like to start on... Tracy, if you'd like to start, please, just for the sake of the live streaming.
Hello, I'm Tracy Giles, head of Monmouthshire Children's Services.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Simon Burts, Chief Officer, Social Care and Health.
Good afternoon, County Councillor Liz Hackett-Payne, Cabinet Member for Education and Learning.
County Councillor Davy Jones.
County Councillor Debbie Blakeburgh from the Trellick United area.
County Councillor Roger Harris.
Chris Hallan.
County Councillor Maureen Powell, Castle Aberguvenny.
Community Councillor Keith Plough-Meagre with Endee and School Governor.
County Councillor Peter Farley-St Mary's, Chepstow, and Vice Chair of this committee.
I'm Penny Jones, Radcliffe Ward, and I'm Chair of this Select Committee.
Hazel Illett, Scutiny Manager.
Nicola Perry, Democratic Services Officer.
Stephanie Hawkins, Principal Officer, Additional Learning Needs.
Thank you very much. Well, Stephanie, are you, once I've given the introduction, are you prepared to... Are you presenting this without Sarah, or is Sarah going to come along and intervene and help you?
Yes, she will be joining us, but she's caught up on the telephone.
All right, so you're quite happy to carry on, okay.
Yes, quite happy, thanks.
Well, this report is led by Stephanie Hawkins, and Principal Officer of ALN, and Sarah McGinnis, who's Chief Officer Education, and follows on from the November 2012 ESTIN inspection, which reported that the quality of local authority education for CYP with ALN was unsatisfactory. The reasons will be given in the presentation, but the result of ESTIN's report is the Strategic Review of Additional Learning Needs, August 2014, produced by the ALN team, having consulted with children and young people from nine to fifteen, with twenty-nine schools participating, parents and carers who were given the opportunity through four consultation evenings, schools, head teachers and staff, and SNAP consulted with parents using the same consultancy questions. So there's rather a lot there, and it's quite a big document, so Stephanie, if you'd like to... I'd like to hand over to you now. Just before you do, however, Sarah, would you like to come and sit down here? All right, okay, thanks. Sorry, Stephanie, when you're ready.
Thank you, Penny. The Strategic Review of Additional Learning Needs, as you are aware, was undertaken after our general inspection, when ESTIN determined that the standard was unsatisfactory. The number of statements of education needs was too high, and resources were directed towards the statutory assessment process. Strategic planning was weak, data was not collected regarding pupil progress, and there was a lack of specialist facilities for pupils with autistic spectrum disorder, behavioural difficulties, and severe learning difficulties, resulting in pupils travelling long distances to attend out of county placements. So we began with that background. I took this role two years ago, and we have looked at how best we could go forward, and decided the best way we could do this was to consult. So we began by consulting with children and young people, and that was a day in Shire Hall, which was extremely successful. And children can always get to the nub of what actually needs to be done, and how they thought we should go forward. We had four consultation events with parents, we had consultation events with schools, with governing bodies, we had a separate consultation event, which went ahead by our parent partnership group, SNAP-Cumry, and they used the same strategies as we did to consult, but we felt we needed a completely independent consultation process. So they then gave us their results, and the themes that came back from that consultation... There were three main themes, although there were sub-themes. The first theme that concerned everybody the most was the behaviour of children and young people. And that broke down into several groups. The main group was the support for children with behavioural, emotional, and social difficulties, and the support for children with attachment difficulties and ASD, pathological demand avoidance, all the way through to what were we doing with children in early years, children who attend our nurseries, children who attend our playgroups, who have no formalised identification or diagnosis. The second theme was around the processes around additional learning needs, and how we were going forward with the system we have at the moment, which is still statementing. There may be some confusion out there, and I want to clear that up straight away, that we are aware that there has been a white paper produced around additional learning needs, and the consultation process for that is ongoing at the moment. Now, the consultation, the white paper, is looking at doing away with statements, doing away with the graduated response, which is school action, school action plus, and just having one group of pupils with special educational needs. Now, that is not in force at the moment, that it hasn't been legislated for. We are still working under the old code of practice, where we had statements, and school action, and school action plus. So we were looking at what we could do to support the children rather than the process. And the last theme that came out very, very strongly was meeting the needs of as many of our children and young people as possible within Monmouthshire. Now, this has been an aim of the authority, to do this, and obviously ALN isn't capable of doing this alone, so we work very closely with our colleagues in Twenty First Century Schools. So after we had that, we produced the document, which you have all had electronically, which all schools have had, and this has not, at this point, been distributed to parents, but governors have it, schools have it, and it has been made available to you. Now, you can see from the policy, the aim has been to put the child, the family, and the school at the centre of the provision. So in other words, we had a system which was quite, could be described as paternalistic, that we held the funding, we held the money, we held the panels, and the schools apply to us, and we decide whether it would be appropriate to fund or support. The move now is for schools to become far more central to the process. So we are working on systems of individual development plans, and school action plus resource assist, and all of these features will be centralised in schools rather than in County Hall. The second aim of our strategy is to ensure equality and consistency across the authority. School action plus and school action were written into the code of practice without clear guidelines on what it looked like. We often say in school, what does good look like? What does it look like when it's successful? We had the same with ALN. What does school action look like for a child with ASD, for a child with dyslexia? What does it look like in Caldercot School? What does it look like in Cross Ash? And part of the remit of this document, which you have, you will see what we would call a matrix, which explains what we would expect to see, the support that would be expected to be given, the resources that would be expected to be given, at these different levels across the identifications. If a child has a medical condition, they have a diagnosis. If we consider they have a barrier to their learning, it's called an identification. We can't diagnose as teachers. Another very important part of this document is to clarify the roles and responsibilities of schools and of the authority. We found there was a deal of confusion out there about who's responsible for what, whose role is this. Parents would say, you know, we thought you were responsible for this. No, it's actually the school that's responsible for that. We were looking at funding, that was extremely important. What are the roles and responsibilities for funding? Funding is held within schools, and they have the responsibility for administering that. We hold funds as an authority, because we have a statutory duty to do that. So if we identify a child with learning difficulties, then it would be reasonable for us to fund that child's provision if it was outside the role and responsibility of normal school life, okay? We also have to provide a clear and transparent graduated pathway to access support and funding. Now, money isn't everything in ALN, as I'm sure you are all very well aware. The understanding of what support you can have and how it could be used is as important as the funding is. Often, just sitting somebody, sitting an adult next to a child, is not going to achieve the results that you want. So we have to know what we're actually doing with the money, know how we're spending it. Is it value for money? Are the children getting value for money? And lastly, we had to look at how we were going to measure the success of this document, so we instantly thought, well, the best way is to ask the children. So on an annual basis, parents, children, schools, governors, and SNAP will consult to make sure that this document is doing what we hope it will be doing. Now, there are two big C changes in order for us to achieve what we want to achieve. Firstly is the planning document, which is at the back. Now, up to this point, our annual audit has been a document that has looked at what has happened over the last year. So it's rather like your school report. What did you spend your money on? How did you build the capacity? How did the pupils get on? Who's on the SEN register? With this document, all schools will plan how they're going to manage their ALN budget, and plan how they're going to manage their resources. So that's at the back of the document, or I'm sure you've seen that. And that will happen along with the other budget meeting at the beginning of the year. The other big C change is school action plus resource assist, or SAPR, we have to give it one of these initial things in education. And what we want to do there is, rather than parents feel they have to resort to a statutory process, which is a twenty-six week process minimum, to achieve any sort of additional support for their child, we're looking at how best we can meet with schools, meet with parents, and put additional funding in at school level. Now, at the moment, we do have a system for doing this, called band funding, but again, it's not held within the school, it's held by us, and we devolve that to the school. So those are two very significant changes on how we intend to make this document work. Now, obviously, you've all had the document, so would it be... Sarah, have you got anything else to say about it, or take questions?
Yes, Stephanie, if you would, please, yes. Anybody, any questions, please. Councillor Powell.
Thank you, Chair. I've been listening to how these changes are going to be. The one thing we can't do is, we can't alter the children who are having difficulties. We can't say, well, we've got so many children, we can only look after so many, because they've all got to be looked after if they're genuine. So what are you going to do? If you do away with statementing, how are you going to estimate which children need which specialised teaching?
Right.
And the other thing is, you were saying about the responsibility. Do you feel that the responsibility for these children should be shared between the parents and the schools and the teachers?
Thank you, Councillor Powell. Well, I think your questions are directed towards the legislative changes. First of all, it is Welsh Government who decide whether we statement children or not. At the moment, we do. Now, you will be aware that there is a significant amount of concern about the new white paper. That the principle, the guiding principle behind the white paper is that all children have equal access. So if you have something like a spelling difficulty, or if you have a life-limiting condition, at the moment, we range that between school action, school action plus, and statement. In the new legislative format, there will be equal access. Everyone will have the same rights and presumably responsibilities, but they haven't been legislated for yet. So as far as we are concerned, it's our duty to identify children's needs through our schools. I don't teach, I don't have that responsibility, but the teachers do. So it would be their responsibility to create an individual development plan through personal-centred practice, and we would be involved in that and support them. But you're absolutely right, all children from, I believe they're looking at September sixteen was the last thing, all children would then, no one would be statemented, it would all be on individual development plans. Now, as far as we're concerned at the moment, it is fair to say we're a high-statementing authority. We believe that the children who are statemented deserve that support. However, this document is going to make it clearer why they deserve that support, and where the children are at school action plus, and where they are at school action. So we believe that if there's transparency and clarity about where we are on the code, then that will make that decision easier. Right, your question about responsibility for parents and schools. Well, I think that is down to roles and responsibilities. I firmly believe that communication is the name of the game. That's what we should be doing. We should have clear lines of communication. We should, I know we're a small authority with a small number of people, but we still have different layers of how we communicate. So as an authority, we communicate with parents with our monthly drop-in sessions. So if parents do have a concern or a worry about school, and all this is emailed out to parents and advertised in schools, if they just want to come and talk to us rather than talk to the school, we're happy with that, we'll do that. We also have our annual reviews. We also have our standing Working Party group. So we have a group of parents of children who have special educational needs, and that's a standing group. At the moment, they're working on the rights of the child. You may, as a council, be aware that the rights of the child are changing quite considerably from the first of January. At the moment, only parents or guardians can appeal to the SEN Tribunal for Wales. From the first of January, a child can appeal to the Tribunal for Wales. So I would imagine that parents would be supporting them in doing that. But is there anything else I can...
Councillor Harris, and then Councillor Blakeburgh.
Thank you, Chair. I've got a number of questions, but I'll only ask one, and then we can share them out, just in case I hog the limelight. I've read the document, and there's no doubt about it, it really is comprehensive. It makes it understandable, all aspects of why, and the whys and the wherefores of ALN. And to that, even to the point of it being almost motherhood and apple pie. And if we're actually going to implement this, it's going to be fantastic. I think there's no doubt about that. What I'd like to know is, have we got the staff and the funding to properly implement this strategy? Because if we haven't, then we might as well throw it away now.
Well, we have to, as I've heard it said before, do things differently. I've been in this authority twenty-five years now, and when I was teaching, it was very much the patriarchal view that County Hall was here with the money, and we were in school with the children. Well, that's not going to work now, is it? So what we need to do is have the money in the schools, and we need, as you said, to share the responsibility. We have a statutory responsibility to respond to children's special educational needs. We will do that through the schools. We will ensure, as an authority, through pupil tracking, and the EAS help us with that, they are our school improvement arm, they set the targets with the schools and ensure that they're robust. We track the pupils through their tracking systems to see, to make sure that the interventions are good value for money, because that's important. You can have all the money in the world, but if it doesn't work, it's not going to make the difference, is it? So it needs to be focused, and that's what that does. I think it's very important as well that schools understand that we can't play the old partnership games, that, you know, schools may feel, may advise parents that perhaps there's additional support required that is additional to and different from what they would normally be expected to provide. Now, because the individual development plans and the school action plus resource assist plans are based in schools, we're going to do them in schools. There will be no coming to County Hall for panels and things like that anymore, I think. It shares, people get the idea they're in the game as well. This isn't anybody coming with a magic wand. These are the parents, the schools, and the authorities, sitting down together and working out what's best. So, yes, we're a smaller staff, but the idea is, I don't have the children, the schools do. That's where the staff needs to be. So we don't need rafts of people in, is that reasonable, in County Hall?
So can I just say on that, so it sort of infers that there is limited funding, there is unlimited funding, and obviously, there are some schools that will need a greater provision than others. Can we just be assured that those schools have got more money than, let's put it that way, than the ones that don't need so much? So in other words, if you're going to dole it out between, say, forty-three schools or whatever, equilaterally, if that's the case, then it's not going to work?
Well, we don't do that. It's not an equilateral system. How we do it is we have different systems. We expect all schools to support children with additional learning needs with five per cent of their budget. That's what Welsh Government assume they do, and we have a tracking system to make sure that they do. And if they fall short of that ideal, then we will meet with them and the EAS to decide how they're spending their money. We have the delegated band funding, which is set by the Funding Forum, which is set on a deprivation budget. So everybody gets a lump sum to do specific catch-up for numeracy, for literacy, for anything else they choose. But then we will measure how effective that is. The last thing we have is the band funding, and that's for individual children. There will always be children who need additional support, and who are obviously, by identification, are entitled to that. So it's not just a one-size-fits-all. There are three funding streams, and we would expect, and we track all three funding streams to make sure they're being the most effective that they can be.
Thank you. Councillor Blakeburgh.
Just really to follow on, detailed follow-on questions from councillor Harris's, really. I guess I'm still struggling, I'm not convinced with the answer that we have enough staffing and enough money to make this work. So with this new strategy, how has the roles, the duties, and the responsibilities for providing additional learning needs support changed? First, for the additional learning need team, the authority, and secondly, for the schools and teachers? And I've got a few more questions, but if I do it in steps, if that's all right.
Okay, well, I think if you look at...
I have read it, but just in full words, if that's...
Roles and responsibilities are... Give me the book from page fifteen. I think it came out very clearly from the consultation, that although the work was being done... Sorry. It came out very clearly from the consultation that although the work was being done, parents and schools were slightly confused about who was doing what. And that's why we have put this in quite a clear way to show what we would expect through partnership working the authority will be doing, what we expect schools to do. As I've said, the children are actually placed in school, so it's the responsibility of the school to identify and evidence children's special educational needs. For us, our funding mechanisms at the moment, as you are aware, support that in three different ways. Now, as far as we're concerned, our responsibility is to support school in doing that. Now, you're absolutely right that funds are not limitless, so what we need to do is build the capacity of school within the authority to meet children's needs. So looking at the work we're doing with Twenty First Century Schools, at the moment, we only have one special needs resource base, based in Caldercot School, for children in key stage three and four. Remember, children are children up to their eighteen. The Twenty First Century School project will give us a special needs resource base in Monmouth School. So that will help us balance the authority. We have a special needs resource base in Overmono for key stage two. So with the two, three, four, that will help us give consistency across the authority for meeting the needs of children within the authority. And in the lower half of the authority, we have Caldercot Comprehensive School with a large unit, at the moment it's sixty-five base, and we have Pembroke Special Needs Resource Base. We also have Derry View, which is a different kind of resource base, which supports the children within that cluster who have significant need. At the moment, we have, I believe, Derry View has forty-three per cent free school meals. At the moment, we have, I believe, Derry View has 43% free school meals.
Thanks, thanks for the information. I'm still, I guess, still asking the questions of the shift in role and responsibilities. I went through the document. I guess if I, if I explain how I understand it and have I understood it correctly?
Yeah, I'll take those.
So for me, the additional learning needs staff, their role has moved...
In the, in the authority?
In the authority. Has moved from direct service provision through to now, their role is information giving, assessment, referral, and monitoring. The roles and responsibilities for schools and teachers, I seem to pick up as increased now. They are now the providers of the extra support. They are responsible for identifying and meeting the needs of pupils with additional learning needs, and also the delivery of the provision through the, through the School Action and Action Plus. They have also, they have to assess and prove need, which means more data collection, report writing, evidence gathering. They have to evidence impact in pupil progress. And they have to manage the scheme and teach the rest of the class. As I read it, it just seems as if more, and I guess the question, and again, I've got another question to answer that, what extra are we expecting from schools and teaching staff to roll out this strategy?
Well, you're right in that we, as an authority, would expect that we are an information providing service. That's absolutely right and proper, that we provide information to schools and to parents so they understand the system. And that's principally what our strategy is about. Assessment for us is managed by our psychology service. It's also managed by our partners. We do not assess children in isolation. It's very important for us to work with health and social services to ensure that we have the full picture of the child. Now, we appreciate that school's responsibility at this stage is for their own information and their own gathering of assessments. And at this stage, for us, the legislation requires that we do it. Now, in the white paper that's coming out, I'm sure you will understand that that responsibility will also shift to schools. We have the responsibility for holding it, but schools will then be responsible. Individual development plans will be created and held within schools rather than held within the authority. So monitoring of data is very important for us to ensure that there is value for money. We still hold ALN budgets, as you're aware. The contingency budget, which manages additional funding to schools, the county budget, and the special budget, which manages children who have needs that are very, very significant. So looking at what we're saying for schools, yes, schools will be responsible for identification. The children are with them. So it's right and proper. They know their children best. They will be responsible for identifying the needs of the child and for the delivering of provision. Now, assessing need is done in partnership, as I've explained. But for the extra support, your question is then, is the additional support coming from an additional budget within school or with an additional budget within the authority? Is that your question?
My bottom-line question is, has the responsibility and workload increased in schools to address children with additional learning needs under this scheme? The answer, I think, is yes.
I think the answer to that is that the children are within the school, and they, with support from additional learning needs teams, so psychology and early years support, will carry out the assessments. But I don't, no, I don't agree with you. I think the benefit of this, and when we visited other authorities who have systems like this, the benefit is that the schools are now more in control of how they use the funds that, which are at their disposal, which we, as an authority, will delegate to them. And rather than having to refer to us, and we control the panels and we control who receives the support.
Thank you. Sarah would like to come in on this, please.
Thank you, Chair. Fundamentally, it's really important. You mentioned councillor Blakeborough, thank you for the question. But you mentioned that teachers currently plan for identify need, impact on pupil progress, they need to do all of these things. And, you know, we need to really bear in mind here that when we're talking about children with additional learning needs, we're talking about all children. The workload of a teacher includes children with additional learning needs now. The workloads of teaching assistants includes additional, children with additional learning needs now. Those children who have very complex need will still be catered for, for want of a better word, specifically, and possibly outside the authority. We are also working towards catering for our children within our authority in our strategic planning around our 21st Century Schools, and so on, so forth. But class teachers planning for delivering teaching, marking, creating displays, input into the strategic direction of school, possibly additional responsibilities they hold within that school, measuring impact on pupil progress, identifying needs, teaching the rest of the class. Our children with additional learning needs are part of the rest of that class. They're not extra, they're part of. And we currently have a well-staffed teaching stock in Monmouthshire. We currently have teachers, teaching assistants, who are very well-versed in supporting our children with additional learning needs. We need to make sure that our teaching profession across the country is also very well-versed in catering for children with additional learning needs. We will still retain our contingency budget. We will still ensure that those pupils with complex needs are managed and are delivered the right and proper education, either within or without the county. But fundamentally, a teacher's workload remains the same. A teaching assistant's workload remains the same. We are not talking about involving children with very complex needs in classrooms who aren't already there, they are already in our schools.
Thank you, Sarah. Councillor Farley would like to come in, please.
Stephanie, I wonder if you could tell us a little bit more about the schools that are listed on 29 to 31 with facilities, additional facilities? Is that the right way of describing it?
Yes.
I noticed, by the way, you haven't mentioned Chepstow, but there are five schools listed, Overmono, Pembroke, not Pembroke Road, Pembroke. The document says Pembroke Road, if I could correct you on that. And then you go on to include, of course, Derry View and Collicot and Chepstow. Can you say a little bit more about how those facilities work? I mean, the paper's clear about the issues that they cover, but a little bit more about how they work? And then as a, as a second question, one that I'm sure would concern governors, at least, of some of those schools. Is it not the case that having those centres distorts the overall performance picture of the individual school? That seems to me to be an issue which we ought to try to address on a county basis.
Thank you. I do apologize for calling Pembroke Pembroke Road. When I taught there, it was called Pembroke Road, sorry. So I'll, I'll have to take that out.
I'm just thinking of when it goes out to the White House.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, you can see that this is how we currently stand at the moment. This is what we have. Chepstow Comprehensive secondary base is different. It is different to the others. It is a base which is run by the school for the authority. It has children with quite complex and severe needs. Mountain House Special School is designated to have boys between 11 and 16 for SEBD. Collicot Comprehensive School does sterling work with and accommodates up to 75 pupils. Derry View Primary School, as I've explained, is slightly different. And it does deal with mostly pupils within its own catchment area. And that is something that we are currently considering with the school. You can see that Overmono and Pembroke are quite different in that they support the authority's needs with children with special educational needs. Now, the specialist team also involved in this is outreach. And that hasn't been mentioned yet, but one of the supportive roles that we have, along with psychology and advisory officers, is the outreach team, who are current teachers. And I think that's extremely important, that part of the resource we have are teachers who teach every day. And they will visit other schools and support them in managing children with ASD, sorry, autistic spectrum disorder, pathological demand avoidance, attachment disorders, attention, hyperactivity disorders. So that's been extremely successful. And that actually was mentioned in our last inspection as being a very successful string to our bow. You speak about units that are placed within our schools. And I attended the governing body meeting of Pembroke School on Monday night, I think it was Monday night, where the EAS, Nicola Allen, our senior challenge, principal challenge adviser, and myself, presented to the school governors their pupil tracking and the results of the pupils. And it was extremely interesting that you could see that with the children from the SNRB, the attainment of the school was presented in a way that reduced the overall attainment of the pupils. So we've explained a system of disaggregation that you would have two sets of figures, one set of figure that included the 24 children from the unit, and one set of figures that didn't. So we have a more reasonable response. Now, we did that quite successfully on Monday evening, and we'll be looking at that. However, when Gwent split up and we all went off with our different special schools, our special school is a school for boys for SNRB. If you look at Newport, who have Micebu, if you look at Torvine, who have Crown Bridge, they were left with schools that dealt with severe learning difficulties, profound multiple learning difficulties, a whole range of difficulties, which we actually quite successfully integrate within our schools at the moment. If you consider that well over 80% of all stated pupils in Monmouthshire are in Monmouthshire schools, mainstream schools, with support, but they are within our schools. So Torvine and Newport, who I've been working with through the South East Wales Consortium, have created what they call a hub-and-spoke system, where the children within the unit are registered within the authority's mainstream school. So the issue of standards and being measured, that those, the children within the units, their standards are measured within the special school. Now, as an authority, we can't do that because we cannot enroll our children who are in our units onto the role of Mountain House. So we are looking at that quite closely to see what we can do, working with a hub-and-spoke system. Now, at the moment, I've been working with the EAS, and we have created what we call the special school network. So head teachers from the special schools within the South East Wales Consortium and our heads of units and our head of special school are a group working towards how best we can do this. It may be that we consider the designation of other units, of other schools within our group, to see if we can in some way work our best system. But at the moment, it's got to be disaggregation, and that's far more representative and better for the schools.
Can I come back on that? Can I thank you for that explanation? I know it's an issue that has troubled people in various schools, and I do know that it was discussed on Monday in Pembroke. My spies give me quite detailed information. And I'm grateful for the answer, and I think that's the way we need to go at this, this stage. Coming to one of the points that you've just made, which is also in the report. So what happens to girls in Monmouthshire? It's always interested me that Mountain House, I'm sure is as it is for historic reasons or simply because it happens to have current cohorts of young people there. But I could be forgiven, I think, for believing that actually girls' additional learning needs issues appear to be under-reported and under-acknowledged. Now, I hope I'm wrong, but that's what it looks like.
Thank you. Well, can I assure you that we do track through gender to ensure that our resources are well-placed, that girls are achieving? And I can assure you, looking at our pupil tracking, that girls are achieving very well. The other question you asked me about our special school, if you remember back in Castle Hill's time, before Mountain House was created, Castle Hill actually did take girls, but the designation of Mountain House was then that girls were not included in that. So the previous school being Castle Hill. As far as we're concerned, yes, we agree. The designation of Mountain House will be considered. I think the school are fully aware and on board with that. I think it's important that we consider girls and boys equally, as we would consider anything else. We've, our psychologists have done a lot of work on ASD in females. Autistic spectrum disorder in females can present differently to male children. And a lot of work and a lot of research has been, has been done in that, particularly looking at eating disorders. We've done a lot of work in our secondary schools with eating disorders. And I agree with you, there is more work to do.
Thank you. Now, the chair's indulging me, and I'm grateful for that. But there's final follow-up on this one, because again, it isn't in the document. I don't, I'm not necessarily saying it should be in the document, but it would be very helpful, I would find it helpful, to just get a feel for how many children we're actually talking about. Now, you don't have to answer now, it could be done as a supplement after the meeting, but just like to get a feel for numbers. And any more than that that you can tell me, without going into information which would probably be confidential.
No, that's true. I can talk statistics. Oh, sorry.
Sorry. I can talk statistics, but I can't talk names. So looking at the last three years in the authority, so January 12... Oh, yeah, sorry, yes. Looking at the statistics, at School Action, so January 12 at School Action, we had 875 children. January 13, we had 918 children. And January 14, we had 871 children. So you can see that it has remained fairly constant. In School Action Plus, in January 12, we had 635. In January 13, we had 646. And in January 14, we had 615. Now, for statement, we had in January 12, 359 children within the authority. January 13, 348 children. And January 14, 309. Now, what I don't want you to think is that these are all the same children for each year. We also keep a record of who goes onto the register and who comes off. Now, Welsh Government hold the, what we call the registers, in their Plask documentation. What does Plask stand for? Something pupil...
Find out.
Yeah, find out. I can find that out for you. But that is held by Welsh Government. All schools do their returns to tell Welsh Government what's on the register. So our statements, the number of statements we hold are going down. I advised the Recovery Board this week that in 26 schools, we have had a reduction in statements. In nine schools, we have had an increase in statements. And we're looking into why we've got an increase in nine, what happened there? But also learning from what we did with the 26. So what was working well? What did it look like? So we're working on that. We're also looking at, we've got two really, we've got success stories in Monmouth Comp and Chepstow Comp, who've reduced their number of statements by over 10. And they're still meeting the needs of children. And Derry View and Castle Park in the primary sector have also reduced their number of statements. Now, the important part of this is that as an authority, we have no tribunals at the moment. We have in the past, but we have no... We have in the past, but we have no tribunals. So what I don't want you to think is you're saying, oh, you're just reducing statements, you're just not writing them anymore. If we did not meet the needs of children in Monmashe, the parents would be the first people to tell us and that would come through the SEN Tribunal for Wales. Now, I think the recovery board were noticed yesterday that we are one of the very few authorities who have no tribunals currently at the moment. And I think that is because schools are working well to identify children's needs and we are working well to communicate with schools and parents and put in that level of support.
Thank you. I think, I'm very grateful for that, it was good to hear that. And if you, you could use those figures in a different way completely, the way I hear it, the service that we're talking about in its different forms, in its different arrangements, is actually supporting the equivalent of several school-size populations. You're talking about several small to medium primary schools, if you want to look at it that way, a middle size possibly slightly upwards on that secondary school, if you just look at numbers. And I think that's an important picture. It helps me to understand that we are actually supporting and helping and working with a substantial population at any one time. And I think it's to the credit of the service that it does, so.
Yeah, can I just say before I bring in councillor Harris and then councillor Jones, that to have some data is useful, you know, bearing in mind that we've criticized the numbers through ESTIN. So I was wondering if a copy of the actual data sheet could be sent around to members of the Select? Would that be possible?
Absolutely. I have it here and it can be, I'll write it on a piece of paper and do it.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. Councillor Harris.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I was following on from Peter's, talking about resource classes and I was concerned that in the secondary sector, the resource classes were in Caldecott and Chepstow and nothing in the north. Now, you've just mentioned Monmouth, which I don't think is mentioned in the report at all. So if that is the case, is that going in now or is it going to be wait until it's built? And if it's going in now, what about King Henry?
Well, the report is on what we have at the moment. Now, you will be aware as councillors, our 21st century school plans and how we intend to go forward with resource bases within our authority. Now, at the moment, Caldecott has a resource base and as you rightly point out, there is nothing in the north. So Monmouth School on its rebuild will have a resource base, but what I don't want you to believe is that there will be some sort of building or something on the side of the school, which is where the SEN children go. It's not going to be like that at all. It's fully inclusive, curriculum-driven, education for children with additional learning needs. There will be bespoke support, withdrawn bespoke support, but the focus of our 21st century school project is curriculum-driven for all children, including those with additional learning needs.
So when King Henry gets rebuilt, then we'll attempt to have the same sort of provision there, I would assume.
The intention with all our schools is that we mirror specialist provision in all of them. We're starting with two, we will have that in four, but that isn't to say that we aren't currently providing specialist provision within our schools now. King Henry is doing a marvelous job of providing additional provision for its pupils without a specific base to do that in. Caldecott is in a different position in as much as it caters for more specialist cases than exist in the mainstream in King Henry.
It's good to hear that.
Thank you. Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Chair. Just like some clarification really about the graduation from School Action, School Action Plus and so on. Am I right in thinking that in time, those three, School Action Plus, SAPRA and...
Statements will become obsolete terms and that everything will be based in school, so therefore is School Action?
We have been part of a consultation process for five years now, I believe, with Welsh Government on the new code of practice. We have responded, all local authorities have responded to the latest consultation. As you are aware, at the moment, the code of practice requires us to provide for children between two and 19. The legislative proposals are that we will be responsible for children's additional learning needs between nought and 25. Monmashe requested through the directors adieu inclusion that we would have a financial impact model made available to us by Welsh Government to see what that would look like because there were huge changes here. Not only is the white paper calling for equal access to all, so at the moment there is a statement which has a statutory responsibility placed upon it to deliver certain education facilities. Within the new white paper, all children are at the same level, as you say, there will be no graduated response. And I am, I've been made aware today that the Welsh Government have agreed for an independent consultant to carry out a financially impact model for the 22 authorities, which is extremely important for us.
Could I also ask about the, teachers don't actually diagnose, you said, they identify?
Yes, right.
If we see a scenario of a child having some difficulties and parents are concerned, obviously teachers may have picked it up, they may not have, I'm really angling about the parents thinking that the child has got a label, but the teacher may not have assessed that label or attributed that label. Where will the help actually come from? Will the school psychologist and so on still be called in and kick in the help from County Hall? Or will it be down to schools to pay for that and, you know, the funding then coming from the school itself or from County Hall and so on?
We, as you can see from this document, we have a range of ways we support schools. So it is a statutory duty to support schools, well, to support children through psychology. So we will always do that. It is another statutory duty to provide a parent partnership group, SNAP. We will always do that, unless it's legislated different, we will always do that. We have an advisory teacher for early years, we have our outreach facility, which it is planned to continue. The difference with this document is that in order to access support at the moment, there is quite a lengthy process which is based in County Hall. With the School Action Plus Resource Assist process, it is based firmly in school and we go to school and that's where the child is. So that's where we need to be making sure that all of the support from social services, from health, and I am well aware of the delays in some assessments from health, but that we all work together, but the focus is on school rather than County Hall.
Right. So the unhappy parent will still badger the school for the support that they think they need for the child?
Well, what we're trying to do is not have unhappy parents.
Yeah, good.
And I think, I think we're trying to do that in a variety of ways, by having our parent partnership offer to them, by having the open door policy of the monthly drop-in sessions. So as you say, if it's just, if it's just, I want to talk to somebody, I want to talk to a psychologist, I want to talk to an advisory officer, we do that. This morning, I took three phone calls from parents who had different queries, who didn't want the school involved. And sometimes I think that's effective, not all the time, obviously. Schools are included in how we respond. We have our standard working party, we have our reviews of statements and we have our county councillors who represent their wards and will meet with us and talk to us about the needs of their families. I would go back to, we are one of the very few authorities who at the moment do not have any parents appealing to the Tribunal of Wales. I'm not going to say it's unique, but I'm really tempted to.
So Sarah, would you like to come in?
I just want to add really that the unhappy or concerned parent, their first port of call should always be school in that sense and nothing in this document changes that. In fact, what this document does is support schools to understand their accountability more clearly. We can't legislate for the length of time it takes health to diagnose, et cetera, we're not in that world. But what we can legislate for is the time that it has historically taken parents who are very concerned, quite understandably very concerned, and has often taken them up to 26 weeks to get some kind of response. Now, a school hasn't been able to speed that process up and a local authority hasn't been able to speed that process up. But by very virtue of this document, a school should be in a position to respond much more quickly, if not immediately. And we are responding, bear in mind please, to legislation that will change the face of additional learning needs delivery in 2016. We are responding to that now, two years before we need to be doing it. But this is really to ensure that our children don't slip through the net. And just to go back to the language of School Action, School Action Plus and SAPRA, SAPRA isn't something that you'll find nationally, although it is something you'll find in parts of Wales and Steph's done quite extensive research on that. But SAPRA is, the introduction of SAPRA into Monmashe, should that be the case, means that we are, we are providing a response, an apacy response, to parents who are in a position of emotional distress at that point and we want to be able to respond to that more quickly. So that's that. And just to clear up, Plask, it's pupil-level annual school census for the records.
Thank you. Councillor Blakber.
Hi. Yeah, what does it look like? I just want to kind of get to the classroom, back in the classroom. Still just generally looking at the rules of responsibilities and the idea, and I think we have agreed, that responsibility and workload will increase in the schools. And sort of looking in a classroom, you've got a teacher with 30, 35 children, three of those have got low to moderate level additional learning needs. I guess I'm looking at that same teacher having to teach all of these children, and you're quite right, or every child at some degree has additional learning needs, from the struggling and the disengage through to the highly motivated and extremely talented. And being that the vision, if you like, of education is trying to have a child-centered approach in order to every single child maximizing their potential. So the teacher has this class and the three with additional learning, they have to put the time and the effort in with those three. And I can't understand how that one teacher can do that and everything else without somebody losing out somewhere. So I guess within that setting, how are children with lesser needs supported under this new model? Because there's clearly this provision there for those with higher needs and critical, complex needs, but what about the lower? What provision is there for the one-to-one? Because there will be times when there needs to be some one-to-one intervention. And I have some questions around funding, but without funding going in to have extra support in that classroom to support that teacher doing that job, I can't see how this can work.
Sarah, would you like to answer, please?
I'll do my best. We're not removing funding, we're adding, we're adding funding to schools under this system. Our teachers are already teaching classes of 30, where there will be three, six, nine, 12 children with additional learning needs, either because those additional learning needs mean that they have more complex behavioral issues or because they're really high flyers. So the same could be said for meeting those needs too. And to actually focus on the needs of three high flyers means that 27 others would be by the wayside. Our teachers are already doing this work, so we're not describing a situation that's different to the situation that exists already. We're describing a situation where we are supporting schools to be better at identifying individual needs, to be better at tracking individual pupil progress. We already have circumstances where our teaching assistants and our teachers provide time to each other in order that one or the other of those people are providing one-to-one tuition in many cases. And in many, many respects, this is about really good strategic planning on the part of schools. This is in order to support schools to do this better, to do what they're already doing better. We're not assuming for one second that they would be doing anything different, we'd be assuming that they're doing it better than they are now.
And if I, could I respond?
Yes. I should say even better, not better.
Even better. And to say, the point of education, what we want from education is to be independent, to lead independent lives. I think it's extremely important that we all have the same opportunities, that there's complete parity of opportunity between HIVI and any other, any other form of special educational need. And we have learned through looking at our stated pupils, looking at our fixed home excluded pupils, that sitting an adult next door to them so that they can do the actual writing for them is an old-fashioned model which hasn't worked. We need to support children to have access to additional adult support and I agree with that wholeheartedly. There has to be, no Monmashe statement will say one-to-one. It is access to because our job is to educate children to live their lives and that's what we are intending to do, aiming to do, and with the support of schools. For teachers who, I am one of those profession, I'm registered at the GTCW, we are highly-paid professionals, we work in a world now where there are 30 in children in our classes. The largest class I ever taught before this legislation was 42 with 26 boys. I feel that teachers work in teaching teams now with the foundation phase particularly, it's been particularly successful for young children, particularly for boys, particularly for children with special educational needs. The face of teaching has changed considerably, I'm sorry if this sounds like a lecture, over the last five or 10 years, that now we work in teams, children's needs are met and it's not just a case of three children in the class who can't get on. I think that completes all, finish all, Sarah.
First of all, totally agree with the principles of what you've just said, it's the practicalities I want to look at. Yes, I agree, the face of teaching has changed. This is why a lot of people are leaving teaching because of the extra pressure being put on them. This is where I'm a little bit concerned that they are ready work with full capacity and we're adding more on. Interestingly, you said that we're adding funding to this scheme. Overall picture here, because I don't think we can look at this without looking at funding. Two or three questions, but the first one, in real terms, are school budgets being cut this year? I've got a few more.
No, they're being flatlined, but they're not being cut, but we're not talking about school budgets today, we're talking about ALN.
Can I just come in there, Councillor Blakber? Okay, you can, but let me just explain, I did say earlier that we are, at the next meeting, Select, we are discussing the budget for ALN. So it won't be detailed today.
Yeah, I'd like to just sort of flick on a little bit there. It's interesting that you said the flatlining, I'm under the impression that they're having to cut the budget by 4% for the next year because there's 1.1 million to be, but we'll look at that later. In real terms, is the ALN budget being cut? No. But we did make savings last year and we're planning to make savings next year, so to me that is a cut. So I am thinking, there's less money and within schools, they're wanting to have teaching assistance, but when budgets are being cut, teaching assistants are the first people to go. And the knock-on effect then is teachers are asked to do more with less, knock...
Knock-on effect is that there will be less support for all of our children, particularly if we're having to ask teachers to focus on ALN and also free school meals, partly because of pressure from Welsh Government. My question then, leading into this, because I can't delve too deeply into budgets, which is a shame, because I think one leads on to the other. In negotiations with teachers, I'm just interested to know whether the teachers and the heads, what feedback you've had from them and to highlight some of their concerns.
Well, thank you very much for giving me that opportunity. And it has been remiss of me not to explain the feedback I've had from schools and from governing bodies and from parents. Schools are extremely positive about this document. They feel that it brings the clarity around our strategy, what we're actually offering as authority, what their responsibilities are. They feel that the matrix is extremely supportive. Because now, instead of creating a document to show a child would need additional support in, not just in the way of money, but in resources or time, that this document actually does that for them. So a lot of the time and energy in filling out forms and bureaucracy is taken away, because it's all written down here for you. I have met with head teachers and chairs of governors. I've met with all school SNCs. And we have been through this document. And I have not, it is fair to say, I have not had a negative comment. What I have been asked to do is to provide service plans for psychology and for SPLD, specific learning difficulties. And we have done that as well. And we're meeting with our cluster schools next week and those plans will be rolled out. So the response from teachers on the ground, the SNCs, and from head teachers and from governors has been extremely positive.
They have raised no concerns with you at all over this? Is that what you're telling me?
What I'm telling you is that this document has been received extremely positively. They have asked for clarification on service improvement plans for psychology and for specific learning difficulties.
Have they highlighted any concerns or issues with you?
At the head teachers' meeting, which you attended, they did not. There was no, there was no cause for concern on this document and it was received positively. There were no causes for concerns brought up by governors. And I have had no letters or emails regarding concerns for this document.
Thank you, Stephanie.
I really have to come in at this point.
No, I'm sorry, you've had your state. You can come back, councillor Blakber. All right, but I really feel that the question has been answered and I really don't want it to go any further. Right, councillor Harris, followed by Mr Plough and then councillor Jones.
Thank you, Chair. We've been talking about the role of governors here and obviously the role of ALN governor probably hasn't been that important. Well, it has been important, but maybe not taken as being important by the governing body. It's going to be a lot more now, if I consider the document. What sort of thoughts have you put for meetings of ALN governors? A, to make sure they realise how important the role is? And B, to come together, maybe in clusters or however you like to look at it, at least six monthly, for example, while this document is being embedded, so that they can discuss problems, best practices, et cetera. Just wonder what you think about that proposal?
Thank you. I've been working with the EAS, the Education Achievement Service, to provide a roles and responsibility specification for SEN governors. I'm also very involved with training for SEN governors. And in January, I'm rolling out a training on the new white paper, on the new legislative reform. I agree with you. I think SEN governors are a very important role. It's a sensitive role. And I think SEN governors need the support of the authority, particularly in realising that their role is one of support rather than the conflict model, where the parent comes to them in the school and they're in the middle. So it's very important. I'm working with the EAS to do that. The governor's service that is within that body is second to none. And we found it a very positive way of showing that we work well together. Well, the legislative reform, we, we've, the code of practice is a code of practice for special educational needs and the regulations, which is law that goes with the code. We are special educational needs now. We are aware that Welsh Government wanted this to be called additional need and to include more able and talented children. The first consultation that they've done threw that out because they felt that we are education. So it should be determined that it's additional learning needs. So we believe now, from the last consultation, that it will be, SEN will become ALN.
Mr Plough, would you like to?
Yeah, sure. Hi, Stephanie. We've gone from review to proposition to test market. You mentioned 12-month audit, but presumably there's going to be ongoing monitoring regularly. And really, I suppose, what better way of identifying that monitoring than finding out the reactions of the children who really we're most caring about? Now, coupled to that, you keep hearing this term cash-strapped and everybody's cash-strapped. But I wonder if we're also efficiency-strapped in the same way? And I wondered what efforts, you know, we've put into getting management to really identify areas that could become more efficient. And usually, efficiency means money-saving. I just wondered what you thought.
Okay. Well, to answer your first question, how do we monitor? We have a service improvement plan, which is on the hub, and that's monitored quarterly. So it's extremely important for us that we know where the money is being directed, looking at how the children are managing to achieve their potential. It's extremely important for us to be very aware of the direction of travel of ALN. It is a movable feast. We have seen over the years, different identifications become more prevalent. We did, when I was teaching, we had a high ratio of children who were identified as dyslexic. That now has decreased. And we had, I would say, in the last couple of years, we had a high ratio of children identified with autistic spectrum disorder. That now continues, but we also have pathological demand avoidance and SEBD, social, emotional and behavioural difficulties. So you're absolutely right. We do need to make sure that we're monitoring effectively and pupil-tracking effectively. But another way that we monitor whether we're doing the right thing is through our school councils. So we will bring children in and have our collective days, but we will also send questions through our school councils and have responses from that. So that is an easy, ready check for us to make sure that children are having their say. Now, with regard to efficiency-strapped management, I think it's a good question. What does good look like? How do I know that this stands a chance of working? Well, the research that we did before we began the consultation was to go on a ticketour of Wales and have a look at what everybody else is doing. I think being sort of in the corner of Wales, we have in the past perhaps, we sit next to a very large neighbour who runs things completely differently. It is a different country. And I don't think we've been out and about often enough. And this is something that, when Sarah arrived, she said, why don't you go and visit somebody else? And that's exactly what we did. We went to see what good would look like in other authorities that have the same profile we do. Free school meals, looked after children, rural deprivation, rather than in the city. And we were greeted very warmly and it was a very successful event. We looked at other authorities who've had excellent ESTIN inspections and looked at their systems to see if they were robust. Then looked at the best and decided how we would go forward. So we had that background and that knowledge of, as you say, it's important to know, what are you aiming for? What does it look like when it's working? We've seen that and looking at the voices of our children, hearing the voices of our children and our parents and our governors and schools to help it work for this authority. It's not just a bought-in model landed on Monmouthshire. It's looking at what we need and what are good examples?
Yeah, I think, sorry Chair, you mentioned the word what's best. And really, that needs to be coupled with best use, which is not always looked at. And really, my wife was 45 before she found out she was dyslexic. And the suffering that she had going through her school years was phenomenal. And I think that the motives behind your review and what you're doing are terrific. And I fully support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Plough. Stephanie, just to reiterate, I think we've got to acknowledge Keridigion, haven't we, in this report? Because they had an outstanding report and this one is based on theirs, is it not?
Absolutely. We all like to start with a blank page or a new start. But we are dealing with children and with their education. So we need to make sure that we've left no stone unturned to recognise what good looks like and to move forward in that. We visited Keridigion, whose profile is extremely similar to ours. Extremely similar. We also worked in our own South East Wales Consortium with Torvine, Newport, Llanfair Gwens, Cefili, also the Vale. We went to visit the Vale and Vale have come to visit us to make sure that we've taken good soundings on what other authorities are doing and it's working. But I stress, this is not a bought-in model. This is a collection of models that we've looked at, where success has been achieved. And then we have consulted with our own authority and the stakeholders within our authority to make sure it works here.
Thank you. I'm mindful of the time and we've still got two other presentations, but councillor Farley's got a question.
Thank you. Stephanie, you've referred, I think, more than once to the EAS. Am I right in thinking then, from what you've said, that as head of service interfacing with appropriate people in the EAS, it's actually working well and the relationship is all right? And then there's a supplement, which maybe Sarah might want to consider answering. Is everybody clear, not least the EAS, but particularly the schools, where the responsibilities lie? Because we have rightly, in my view, retained this statutory function. But is everybody clear that that's the case?
Yes, the relationship between additional learning needs inclusion and the EAS is strong. It's thriving and it's growing. ALN does not have a school improvement arm. That is not our role or responsibility. Our role is to support school in the identification and support of children with additional learning needs. Now, I can't do that on my own and I don't need to because we have the EAS, who are our school improvement arm, who work to support schools with standards. Now, we have particularly good relationships with them because there is no conflict of interest. We have, we work for additional learning need, for children with additional learning needs. They work for all children. So I think it's really important that we remember that children with ALN are part of all children and they will become part of all adults as well. So it is strong, it does work. I think it's particularly successful. Its strengths are pupil-tracking and understand, making sure we have value for money, for the money that we do spend. It's not about what we spend, it's about how effective that spend is for our children.
councillor Pal.
Thank you, Chairman. I just, oh, sorry.
To answer as well, if she wanted to, from a slightly different perspective perhaps.
All right. Thank you councillor Farley, just in answer to the second part of your question. Sorry, I've got my back to you, but it's in order to reach the mic and speak to you. Is everybody clear? Well, everybody has been part of the consultation process. I'm talking schools here and I know that was your question. And our schools have all had an opportunity to have conversations with us and they've had many conversations with us, as Steph has already alluded to. I still think there's a lot of work to do in terms of the understanding, the depth of understanding around accountability. And that brings us back, I think, to a circumstance that maybe Monmouthshire schools and Welsh schools potentially haven't found themselves in, in a way that maybe schools over the border, certainly those in inner cities, have found themselves in for many, many years, where a class of 30 would absolutely, quite possibly only have one child in that class, if any, that had English as their first language. That in itself is an additional learning need. So Monmouthshire schools, Welsh schools, we still have work to do on understanding our accountability and our, and schools' delivery as far as additional learning needs are concerned. But yes, schools are clear on the consultation and have been clear in terms of the report that's in front of you. Schools know what's here. And if head teachers need further conversations with us, we're here to have those conversations.
councillor Pal.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I haven't asked many questions because most of the time, things have been answered for me. But what I wanted, I want to thank you so much for this report. I don't think people in this day and age realise that 35 or so years ago, a lot of these things were poo-pooed and not recognised. I must, I'd like to declare an interest, not, my eldest daughter is now 55 and when she was at her secondary school, I went and asked for some extralations because she was dyslexic, but they didn't recognise dyslexia then. They just said, oh, they're not very good at their reading. And in those days, these things weren't recognised and children went without any real learning, even that close years ago. And I'm thinking, it's very grateful. And this is a wonderful report and it's very thorough. And I find a lot of the explanations of the different aspects very helpful. And I want to thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Pal. councillor Blakber, but I don't want to be long and extended, please. So, question please.
Yeah, just going back to it again, just trying to get to detail. Because actually, you know, I do think it's, it is a really good strategy. As I say, it's just making sure it kind of works really. Not talking about money, but I guess in real terms, have additional learning needs staffing hours reduced?
Yes, no?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure what the question.
Could you clarify councillor Blakber, please?
We have employed additional learning needs support staff, tutors, whatever they're called, I get confused on all the different terms. Have we reduced those hours by reducing the staffing?
You are aware that the county council, sorry. You are aware that the county council last year in their mandate reduced funding. We have looked at how we would go forward with that. And in line with this document now, we have agreed that children at certain levels of the code of practice, school action, for example, we will now support the school to deliver that. So staff within school, the budget within school will now deal with that element of it. We still do direct teaching. We still support the writing of IEPs. IEPs are the learning plans that children have at the moment. They will change into individual development plans and action plans. But at the moment, this academic year, there has, I'm not aware of any cut that's been made. The contingency budget has been spent, as you are aware, and the SPLD. The contingency budget has been spent, as you are aware, and the SBLD budget and the UPS budget, there has been, this academic year, I'm not aware of any reduction. I know there was last year and you were aware of that.
And I think that's the point, last year, and I know there's a mandate coming up again to kind of reduce that funding. It's just because the information I was picking up, that four years ago, additional learning needs support would have at least a one-to-one hour with a young person about twice a week. They're saying now, they're saying up to eighteen children in a day, which is meaning that they're going to have to have group work, small group work, sometimes large group work, so they're not getting that intensity of intervention. And there's a potential for these group sizes to increase. And then that workload going on to teachers to be able to do that within the classroom of thirty, thirty-five. And I know I keep going on about this, but this is fundamentally my issue. Interesting, you haven't had any concerns raised. I have spoken to people from SNAP, parents, teachers and some heads and the concerns are there, that they just haven't got the capacity. They're brilliant at their job, they're very expert, they're very trained, but they're at crisis point in terms of time in order to make sure they meet all of these needs without additional financial support to have additional support staff. So that's their kind of concerns. A question just in terms of when you have a qualified additional learning needs tutor who has studied four years at university, expert in their field, learning their trade, they then have to teach support staff, say, there is no way they will be able to learn at the same quality, at the same level and provide the same level of support as that qualified specialist. The other question is around, are they not?
Can we make this the last one, please?
Yeah, is this not a different skill set? So you've got these qualified people who are brilliant with the kids, but you're now expecting them to teach teachers and to support the teachers? And for me, that's a different skill set.
Right, Sarah, would you like to answer that?
Yes, certainly. Just really, very quickly, one-to-one tutoring, there's plenty of research to suggest that one-to-one tutoring is not always the best form of support for any child. Any kind of withdrawal from the mainstream is not always the best support. That's often only when a child has very, very complex needs. One-to-group tutoring can often generally be far, far more effective and classroom tutoring equally can be more effective. We must not assume that teaching assistants are not qualified to support children with additional learning needs. And I would at the very bare minimum expect a qualified tutor or teacher, as you describe it, to be cascading their expertise to all other staff in a school. We don't learn something to keep it to ourselves or pull the ladder up behind us. If I was employing a qualified tutor in any aspect of ALN, I would at the bare minimum expect them to share the wealth in my school. And I'm sure that's what our brilliant head teachers must be doing in terms of their own strategic planning in Monmouthshire now.
Thank you. Councillor Harris.
Thank you, Chair. Just towards the back of the report, you've got various colour-coded sections regarding particular syndromes, et cetera. And I got lost on some of them. Are they absolutely correct or are there bits missing? Sometimes they don't seem to flow from a heading.
It's colour-coordinated. So if you look at the areas... Sorry, it's colour-coordinated. So if you look at the areas, let's look at the first one, cognition and learning, which is on page fifty-nine, okay?
The back is, the front is fine. It's the, the lilac one.
The lilac one.
Something comes from the green to the...
Ninety-three and ninety-four. Ninety-nine, a hundred, or ninety-three, ninety-four, they change halfway through. Yes, the medical, this is the medical part of the document. So there's the multisensory impairment, congenital deaf blindness, acquired deaf blindness, multisensory impairment, physical impairment and medical conditions and syndromes. So all of those, as you can see, are in the blue section and I apologise for the last one being in purple. It's just the colour that's rubbish. I'm sorry about that and I will get it changed.
Well, I don't know, colour's fine, I just want the...
I don't know why I've gone into lilac, I was obviously having a lilac phase. Sorry about that.
It should all be the same colour.
Yes, sorry.
Right. Can we just, can we draw this conclusion, please? Because I know our next speaker's been waiting a very long time. So I would just like to thank you very much, Stephanie. As long as it's a very quick one, please, councillor Breakba.
It's just really, are you able to assure this very nervous skeptic that continued reduction of ALN resources in terms of money and staffing will not have a negative impact on our children's education? And just asking the Chair the next question, is this coming to full counsel for further discussion and scrutiny?
The aim of all the work we do is in order to improve the life chances of all our children. In this respect, it's the life chances of our children with additional learning needs. I can categorically give you my word that the work that we are doing is to support that, not to have any detrimental effect on it whatsoever.
Thank you.
No, I think you're going to...
Stephanie, I'd like to thank you very much. It was a very comprehensive report and it was extremely interesting. And, you know, some issues have arisen and there are some concerns, particularly about the finance, but that will be dealt with at the next meeting when we discuss budget issues. But in terms of effectiveness as a strategy, we would like to keep an eye on how it's being implemented. And so we'd like to ask you back probably within six months. Would that be agreeable to you and your team?
Yes, the service improvement plan, we report quarterly. So I'm quite happy to...
Fine, okay, well, that would be, that would be excellent. Yeah, we'll put it into our, into our programme. So thank you very much for that. And there are lots of positives to bring out and the main one being the child and the family are the centre of, you know, all our concerns. And that eighty percent of the statements are within mainstream, statement to pupils are within mainstream schools. I find that incredible. And also no tribunals, which I think says a lot for the policy. So thank you and thank you, Sarah, for your contributions. Thank you very much.
I've got the stuff, Steph.
Right, now we're going on to the next item of the agenda, which is the scrutiny of the annual social services complaints report. And this is going to be presented by Annette Evans. And Tracy, I don't know if you're going to have, Tracy Jelis is going to have some input or not? We'll see, yes, see whether you get a rough ride. All local authorities, social services are required to produce an annual report concerning the operation of its representation and complaints procedure. And this is what Annette is going to be reporting on. So, Annette, I hand over to you. Thank you.
Right, so yes, this is the annual report of complaints, compliments and comments that we've received over the last year in children's services. As you probably know, we have a three-stage complaints procedure. First stage is local resolution and if people are not happy, they can go on to the formal stage. And then if they're still not happy, they can go to independent panel or the ombudsman. We've got a leaflet for young people who want to make a complaint called Listen To Me. We don't get many complaints actually from young people, it's usually from carers, relatives. But what we do do is that we write to the young people in our looked-after system every year, just to remind them that if they have any concerns, that they can contact us about it. So for the period first of April thirteen to thirty-first of March fourteen, we had thirty-two complaints in children's services. Twelve comments were received and nineteen compliments. Comments are in effect informal complaints, so we deal with them the same as we deal with complaints, it's just that people don't want to go through a formal process. Of those thirty-two complaints, twenty-nine of those were resolved at stage one, the first local resolution level, and three went to the formal investigation stage. The comments that we received, I've put those, I've put a selection there for you to see the sort of comments that we've received. And as I say, we act upon those and we make sure that people get a response. We had nineteen compliments, which is very good for children's services. And again, I've given you some examples of the compliments that we've received about children's services and the social workers that provide services. Stage one complaints, people generally complain because perhaps we, the biggest thing is lack of communication. This features all the time. It's, you know, where perhaps people feel that we don't get back to them quickly enough and we don't keep them informed, you know, what's going on. So the most common things that people complain about is they feel that perhaps they haven't had the service they should have, communication, information issues, quality of service. There were three complaints that went to stage two, the formal stage. And what happens is that generally with complaints, they made up of a number of elements. So some parts of the complaint may be upheld, not upheld, no finding made. But we always act upon the report and the recommendations from the formal investigations. We make sure that an action plan is done and that we follow through on the recommendations that are made in order that we can perhaps improve our services where perhaps we've fallen short. One complaint went to the independent complaints panel and some parts of that person's complaint was upheld, some were not. No complaints went to the ombudsman. And as usual, we don't get many complaints from young people themselves. However, we did have two complaints from young people. They were resolved at the local resolution stage, explanations were given and they were satisfied with that. We, our complaints have increased from last year, you know, sort of nearly double really. And I've sort of looked to see, well, why is that? And when I've looked at our database, it's mainly where people have complained about the lack of communication and perhaps they've been unhappy with the services that they've got from their social worker. There aren't any other trends as such, it's just that they feel that we haven't communicated well, we haven't kept them informed, we haven't gone back to them. As I said, we always try and learn from complaints, you know, that's the whole purpose of it, to try and improve practice. And where complaints have been upheld, you know, we've looked to give people apologies, put services back in place, do whatever we can to remedy where we have gone wrong. Really, as I said, you know, our complaints, we do try to learn from them, but we do have to get better at responding within the timescales. Stage one, we've got ten working days to respond and we don't do that very well. And stage two, we have to have an external investigating officer, an independent person, and they have twenty-five working days. And generally that's met because they're external, they're just concentrating on that one particular complaint. So we've got to try and do better and look at these complaints within the timescales, especially at stage one. As of first of August, the complaints policy has changed in that we're now following, the Welsh government have asked us to follow the public services ombudsman models policy, which is two-stage, local resolution and formal stage. So there's no independent complaints panel. If people are still not happy, they go to the ombudsman. There are some other slight changes and I've drafted a new policy that will come to your attention, which will set out what the changes are. But they are the main ones, it's just going to be a two-stage complaints policy now. So I've sort of whizzed through that a little bit. If anybody's got any questions?
Thank you, Annette. Before I introduce the first question, I'd just like to point out that I didn't say you were customer relations manager and I'm very sorry in the introduction. Okay, councillor Harris, followed by councillor Farley. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. It was good you acknowledged the comments were really complaints. I looked at it, I thought, you know, I think they were complaints, but, and I think there's quite a small number of complaints considering what we do and let's not forget that. And, you know, you commented that you're going to try and make sure you get the complaints sorted within the relevant time. And I'm sure if you get a complaint, you don't shove it on one side and say, I can't be bothered doing that. It must be because you're under, or the department's under, a lot of pressure. And that comes on to another report where the same sort of thing seems to apply. Can I honestly say, have you got enough staff?
Well, what happens at stage one, it's, even though the complaints come to me, I work with the teams and the team managers to try and resolve the complaints. So it's just not about me, it's about the teams and gathering information from, you know, the worker, the team manager. So there's a lot of people involved really. And as you can imagine, in children's services, it's not straightforward. It's not like, you know, corporate complaints where it's about, you know, the waste bin. It's much more complex and complicated than that. So sometimes it does take time. And as for having more staff, well, you know, we always want more staff, don't we?
Councillor Farley and then councillor Breakba.
Thank you. I always find your reports very helpful and very clear, but there are a couple of things in it this time that mystify me slightly and I wonder if you could perhaps reflect on them. Firstly, we've got some good insights in italics on pages, it's three or four, about what comments were made. And I do take the point that, you know, a comment may be a complaint that isn't taken any further. But in those little vignettes, you get a real feeling, I think, for what the issue was for people. Similarly, in the compliments. But in the actual complaints summary of the thirty-two, for some reason, you haven't done that and I just wondered why. That's the first question. Second question, the report is very clear, there is an unexplained spike. Numbers go up remarkably markedly for a couple of years, then... Numbers go up remarkably, markedly for a couple of years, then down, then up again. And although they may not be explicable, it might be worth just having a little bit of a reflection as to why that might be so, particularly awkward group of customers, I don't know, there might be a reason. Anyway, firstly, to see whether in fact we could in future ask for some vignettes for all three categories rather than just two of them.
Yeah, that's a fair comment. Yes, I can see that for the stage one complaints, I've just given you, you know, just a broad brush about what the complaints were about. I'll give you more detail next time, yeah. And Tracy is going to answer.
Excuse my back, councillor Farley.
Yeah, I do excuse your back, Tracy. The layout is not your responsibility.
No, thank you. With regard to the reflection there that you mentioned about the complaints going up and going down, we have to remember that these are 2013 to April 2014. During that time, the service was under quite significant pressure with quite a high level of vacancies and quite a lot of discontent within the service really. Also, within that timeframe, we had some children that had been on the register for a longer period of time than I would have liked. I was in a different role at that point in this authority. And we were then putting these cases through to higher levels into court and those sorts of things. So you would expect to see complaints rising. I agree with Annette's analysis that the majority of them are down to communication or in fact miscommunication. When staff are under pressure, it always, complaints drop down their priority list because a safeguarding issue will come in or something of that nature. Where Annette and I have been working with the service over the last few months to make sure that actually it's evident from just this, looking at this report today. If you get in there on a stage one promptly, you are more likely to reduce it than anger people, even if they're not happy with the response in so far as okay, they still feel that they, you know, didn't get the answer they wanted, those sorts of things. But also it gave, the staff weren't dealing with them swiftly enough and that was, I think, the majority of the problem. And so then that snowballs and you get more anxious and parents will come back complaining more in some respects. So over the past few months, Annette and I have changed how we deal with these because level ones don't come to my attention. And they tend not to come to my attention until level two and level three in the old system, although that's now changed. But Annette and I have got set up regular meetings and Annette keeps me appraised of the level ones and if the level ones are drifting, so that I then within my leadership group can advise my service managers, this one looks like it might be going a bit, that we need to get a grip on it and make sure that we're responding swiftly. We have one particular team manager who is very good at dealing with complaints and that learning needs to be shared because it isn't somebody's sole responsibility as a team manager to do that. But with capacity issues and dealing with other stuff that's been going on in the service, we've given some support there to a particular manager to try and resolve those. But again, she only has a certain amount of capacity as well. What we're not sure is how the new service, how the new system will embed and obviously Annette will bring that to everybody's attention at a later date. But it's about us being more prompt. There were some complaints, for example, that we can't deal with. So if a case is in court, we can't deal with a complaint at the time it's in court because court is obviously the higher level that needs to be responded to. But if there are any outstanding issues that are then dealt with after the period in court that hasn't been dealt by the court, then they can bring that back in. But again, they may be angry that it has taken so long in their view that we haven't done what we should have done, when in fact we couldn't. Does that clarify it for select? Does that answer your question, councillor Farley?
It does indeed. And in fairness to you, this isn't the first time that you've come and spoken, I believe plainly to us, about some of the management challenges that you're dealing with. And I think we all appreciate that. So the, and I'm grateful for the answer. The only other question I would want to ask is, what I think, instead of the West Lothian question, it's the Harris question. Have you got enough resource to take things forward on this particular issue of managing how the service actually deals with these particular issues?
Thank you for that question, councillor Farley. I would say that, I would say that it's about the service becoming more effective swiftly so that we can reduce the complaints and get things right in the first place because that's what we're all wanting to achieve. And complaints, I don't know where we are with complaints this year. Are they higher than this time last year or not? About the same compliments are higher. We've had 19 compliments since the 1st of April, whereas last year we only had 19 compliments in the whole year. Of course, we may not get any more, we still only have 19 at the end of the year, but, you know, it's looking a bit more positive. And as you all in select have already commented really, it is a complex environment that we work in. Parents are not happy that we're removing their children. So I think to answer your question, councillor Farley, it's about us being more effective from the outset to try and reduce complaints as well as being effective in dealing with them.
Thank you, I appreciate your answer, I'm sure we all do.
Thank you, councillor Brekbr.
Oh, thanks. I have to say, it is sort of sad, but people are very fast at coming forward when things go wrong, a little slower to come forward when things go right. And my goodness, you're doing something special if they're coming forward and making the effort to put in a compliment. So I think, you know, that 19 compliments, that is something to be looking at and applauding. And taking your point, we learn from complaints. And actually, I see complaints as a positive because there's an element to say, you know, complaints can inform best practice. And I think you've kind of answered one of my questions because one of my questions was around what practice has changed or what systems have changed as a result of complaints coming through. And perhaps in future, that's again, one of the questions I'd be, because that shows development and movement and as I say, seeing complaints as kind of a positive vehicle.
Yeah, I agree with you that if we didn't get any complaints, I would be really concerned. Why aren't we getting any complaints? And, you know, 32 complaints is very low. I talk regularly to my colleagues across Wales, you know, and our complaints are extremely low to the complaints that they get. And so it's important that I do remind social workers that they do need to let people know that if they are not happy, if they have any concerns, they have the right to complain. And that, yes, we do look at it as positively because, you know, there are always things that we can learn and do things better, so, so yeah. Yeah, it's good.
Yes, Tracy.
And also, children's services staff find it quite difficult because they feel they're under a lot of scrutiny anyway. And then if a complaint comes in about them, they can be quite upset or angry about that when in their view they felt they've done the best they can or the family have had all that explained to them, but they're not hearing that. So there's lots of reasons. And just to say about the compliments we've been getting, some have been from families, but also the compliments we've been getting are from other professionals and organisations. So it's not just family, just to clarify for select.
Councillor Powell.
Thank you, Chairman. Do you get involved, or are you, do people try to get you involved, where you have conflicts over the visitation of children between parents that are parted and also grandparents that feel things haven't been done right? Does that come into your sphere?
We generally don't get involved in what's called private proceedings, which is where parents do that unless the court, the CafCAS service asks us to get involved.
Yes.
If there are particular issues about contact, those are generally addressed through court proceedings. So it isn't a decision of the local authority generally because if it becomes a contact issue, it's done through a legal process and not through a kind of discussion with staff. Sometimes we have informal arrangements in place whilst the court case progresses and the court then scrutinises our care plan to see whether they feel that's in the best interest of children. So yes, to answer the question, we do get involved, but it is via a court process, not outside of that framework.
Not directly then. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Are there any more questions? I'd just like to thank you, Annette. That was very interesting and informative as always. You did say you were doing a new policy, writing a new policy which will come to scrutiny. What will that title be? Yeah, oh, so it's a new complaints procedure, okay. So we, it will, so it will come, yes, part three. Okay, well, thank you very much and you, Tracy, as well. Oh, okay. Right, thank you.
Hello, I had this extra item on the agenda. Scrutiny of the Looked-After Children Attainment Performance Scorecard. It was being presented by somebody called Sean, but it doesn't look much like Sean to me, so I presume this is... I presume this is Matthew Gatehouse. Matthew, who's performance manager. So this report will be presented and provides members with the baseline information to assess the progress being made of children that the social services work with against the general child population of Monmouthshire. So, thank you, Matthew.
Thank you very much, Chair. So in terms of the work we generally bring before members as the policy and performance team, it's a range of stuff, often covering our improvement objectives as an organisation, the outcome agreements we have with the Welsh Government that bring in funding. But periodically, we bring report cards looking at different areas of work. And this is one such report, looking at the attainment of vulnerable children, particularly the children that social services work with. Now, the terminology in the report, children in need, actually in this context, what we mean is the very broadest group, which encompasses all of those children that social services work with, whether in need on the Child Protection Register or in the Looked-After, the Looked-After system. And we've got some data available to us now that's come out in the last couple of years, called the Children in Need Census. And that allows us to compare outcomes across a whole range of indicators, to look at how well this group of children are doing in Monmouthshire compared to the wider population. And one thing is, it's clear from looking at the report, there is a gap in attainment between those children that social services work with and the wider population. In terms of some of the makeup of that group, some of that to a certain extent has a degree, I mean, I wouldn't like to use the word inevitable, that's quite not the term I'm searching for, but actually if we think that a large proportion of people children services work with, 25%, are children with a disability, of whom there's, you know, a large proportion with special educational needs. So that, you know, the attainment within that cohort will always be impacted on by that factor. But actually, you know, that wider gap beyond that group is something common across the UK. But that's not necessary to say it's something which is right. So this isn't a report that comes with a recommendation. It's really about just provoking some thought and discussion about, you know, I think our roles as individuals, as officers and members of the authority and as members of that wider community, around what actions are in place, the sorts of projects we could be, we could be looking at and understanding, you know, what it is in our society, the way in which our services and so on are structured, that could better close that attainment gap and give children we work with, you know, the opportunities they deserve to fulfil their potential. You know, in terms of sort of the makeup of the children that social services work with, about half of that group receive free school meals, which is quite a high proportion when you compare that to the, you know, to the whole population cohort. I think it's around 12%. Oh, apologies. I don't have the bundle pages, that's page three of the report. 135 in the bundle, thank you very much. So, you know, what we see as we go through a report, and there are a lot of numbers in there, but in a sense that the messages can be condensed into some fairly concise statements. But one of the things which I think as Monmouthshire we do need to look at, first what I'll do is qualify this, the numbers we're talking about are very small. And actually, sometimes it's very hard to make statistically valid comparisons with small numbers. So what my colleague Sean has done is looked at data over a four-year period for our Looked-After Children to iron out the peaks and troughs we get from the swings we see.
That's something that I was going to question because you've done it over a four-year period, but you're comparing, if I've got it right, with the Welsh data of a one-year period. I'm not quite sure how you can possibly do that and get any significance out of it. I really don't understand that.
Well, it makes us look bad, surely, it would.
I can't understand how we can do that. But it'd be interesting if you could go back and let us see, I know there may not be many numbers in each year, but I'd like to see those numbers compared with the Wales average or whatever it is of that year, to see if there's any trend. Because I'm not quite sure what the four years against one year of all Wales is really going to tell us.
Or is it the four-year average or the one-year average?
Can I just come in here then, as well, to add to that point? It said the most recent data from Welsh Government is 12 to 13. So when will the 13-14 be out and, you know, make it more relevant really? Thank you.
Yeah, to come in on the last point, which probably because it's the easiest one to answer. The 13 to 14 data was actually submitted to Welsh Government last week and then they do their analysis and we get it back around about March or April of 2015. So this isn't particularly the most timely data. When you compare it to some of the other measures we see and some discussions which have been happening recently, including Cabinet yesterday, where we're trying to give members access to pretty much live, on-demand performance information. The reason for the comparison, I mean, ideally we'd want to compare one year over one year. But generally, there's a couple of reasons behind not being able to publish the year-on-year stuff. Sometimes the numbers are so small, when you go down to individual school level, it enables you to identify individual pupils. So when we look at that, you know, when you're talking about individual schools, you can actually say, well, that was... Well, I mean, this is why we sort of try and chunk it up into larger chunks. But the other issue is, the variations from year to year are so great that it's only really by looking over a number of years. Now, I suppose what you could say is perhaps we should have done the same for the Welsh average. And I think that's a fair point and I think something we will do, we will do next time, yes. And I think that's a very fair point. But the key issue we're trying to get to with some of this is actually the gap. It's not necessarily the year-on-year change, but it's to highlight the significance of the gap. And it's quite stark when you look at page six of the report. There's a chart there. Attainment gap, MCC, CIM, which is children in need, and all. And the top chart shows the Monmouthshire position, the bottom chart shows the Wales position. And what that's actually measuring is the gap in attainment between children in need and that wider population. So what you see is, within Monmouthshire, you know, the gap starts off at a much lower point than the Wales average. So the gap between children in need and the whole population is not as stark as Wales. At the end of schooling, actually in Monmouthshire, our gap has widened much further than across, you know, across the whole of Wales. And, you know, that's quite interesting for us. We need to really start to understand what are our interventions? Because what we've done here is iron out the small numbers. So we can't, as frequently is the case with this stuff, you know, actually our small numbers make these sorts of comparisons meaningless. We've tried to bring together enough data so that the numbers are high enough to apply some sense of validity to that trend. And you can see when you follow the shape of the line, the same sort of pattern happens that, you know, the gap is widest at key stage three. So it sort of rises up and drops back a little bit. But what you do see is the steepness of that line in Monmouthshire compared to the whole Wales population. And I think that poses some, you know, as I said at the outset, it's not a report that comes with a recommendation, it's here to provoke thought really. And something which I think is interesting for members to consider in your, on your scrutiny role, bleakly something we need to be considering in terms of policy developments, to understand to what extent this is related, if at all, to the way we work, to what extent is it just factors which are prevalent in society? And to understand, you know, what, if anything, we could be doing differently so that those trends are not as stark within Monmouthshire. And actually, you know, the attainment gap is narrowed within Monmouthshire and that these, you know, children from very difficult... backgrounds, who, you know, deserve every possible chance they have in life to make the, you know, to reach their full potential, that we as an organisation with corporate parenting responsibilities for those in the Look After system, but, you know, a duty of care and a sort of moral obligation to those in our communities to close that gap and give them these opportunities, so, and so, so, repeat myself, so it's not saying we must do A or we must do B, it is generally to put that out there to have the conversations, to start this as a point of discussion. So I wouldn't wish to sort of dwell line by line through every single figure, it was a piece of analysis that Sean had done, we felt it was of value and spoke about it with Hazel, and it felt it was something that would be of interest to the committee.
Would you like to ask a question?
Yes, thanks, because I've got a few questions, just as you were saying, it's, we've got the results, and so, the questions that came through my mind as I was reading it was, well, why is this happening, and what are we going to do to address the issue? And I guess those discussions are probably not to have here, because we haven't got the right people here to answer those questions, I guess. But just looking at the numbers, and just so that I'm sort of clear, on page six, looking at the attainment gap with Monmouthshire County Council, children in need compared to the Welsh average, and we have, at key stage two, Monmouthshire County Council, 44%, which is lower than the Welsh 47%, and then, key stage three, 26%, Monmouthshire County Council, much lower than the average of Wales, 32%. 26%, how many, how many pupils are we looking at here? Could be hundreds, could be one.
Yes, actually, I appreciate of scribbling those numbers down on the report, because they're not in my head, but as a whole group, in terms of this cohort, we're looking at a given year at about, over 200, and then when we break that down into the different age groups, you know, any given exam cohort in a year, we tend to have about seven to eight children, so we're not talking large numbers in any different year group, when we bring that up over a four-year period, you know, 30 to 35 children would be representative in the children in need figure for Monmouthshire.
So when you're looking at this, because we've got a lower number compared probably to the average of Wales anyway, then it looks like a higher percentage, but we're looking at very low numbers of pupils, so the difference between the 26 and the 32% could literally be one or two children?
Yes, absolutely, and these are one of the, you know, this is some of the difficulty we have when we're looking at performance with these groups of children, that we do see big swings. Interestingly, we were looking at some numbers yesterday, and one thing that's really pleasing, you heard it here first, it hasn't been written down anywhere yet, is Matt Lyde, one of our colleagues that works across education, has sort of pulled together all the data for the exam results for children who've been in the care system, and last year, we were, and this is another one, it's small numbers, you know, we have to be careful not to bash ourselves over the head too much when numbers are low, or celebrate too much when they're high, but actually, the figures for last year, in terms of the point score of children that cohort, have really come up to the point where, in this particular year, they're not, you know, a million miles away from the mainstream figure, and I think our performance looks like we're going to be about fourth or fifth in Wales, but again, it's small numbers, and we have seen in one year, I recall, we had an incredibly bright cohort of kids coming through the Look After System, and they outperformed the mainstream. Now, you certainly couldn't say, draw a conclusion from that and say that's something you expect to happen year on year.
Councillor Farley.
Thank you, I don't know who we thank, I mean, thank you for the report, as always, Matthew, not quite sure who we thank for this, Hazel probably, for the happy coincidence of this report with the ALN strategy that we were looking at earlier. And a question I've got, it's not a question for you to answer, it's provoked by what this report is offering us, and maybe it's for another forum. Firstly, it looks at how social services and education are in effect working alongside with the same group of young people, and are they working together as well as they could be? It's a rhetorical question, but there's another player here, I wouldn't mind betting that amongst this same group of children will be those with whom the, for whom the health service has concerns, and I would go even further and say there's a high chance I'd have thought that amongst this group of children will be circumstances where there are housing issues and concerns, or benefit issues and concerns. So what we're actually doing here is looking at the children in our county most at need, and the question that that raises is, are we confident that our services, not only within the authority, but with our major partners, are actually focused as clearly as they need to be on this particular group of young people and their families?
I mean, it's very interesting, and I certainly couldn't give a response to that question, but, and I know you weren't seeking one, but the point, you know, around other council services, I think, is really important, members may be familiar with it, but there's some quite compelling research out there, and a lot of this has been done in America, but I think that the findings are equally applicable in other parts of the world, and we invest a lot of time, and rightly so, it's a priority of the council that the education of young people and support for vulnerable are two of our three priorities. But there's a huge amount of research that says, you know, children from different backgrounds, you know, different socio-economic groups, and some of it would apply to this as well, the gap in educational attainment doesn't tend to happen because of what happens between 9am and 3.30pm when the school rings, you know, the school bell goes. You know, when you measure the starts of term, the end of term, what happens over school holidays, where we're seeing the biggest change in attainment gaps is those six-week school summer holidays, it's the weekend, because, you know, often the children from the wealthier families are having access to extracurricular activities, to learning opportunities, that we all know children benefit from, because schools put on school trips to afford these opportunities to everyone. But actually, you know, I know, and I'm fortunate to say, oh, you know, on my weekend, you know, the kids get to go to the museum when they've got a school project on, you know, or if they're doing the Five of London, we can take them up to London to, you know, to walk around. That makes a huge difference to someone's education, and, you know, it's not just, but there are so many opportunities that children from better-off backgrounds have, and actually, you know, to what extent are, as an organisation, are these other services coming together to maximise the opportunities for all of these children, because it's not just about that school working day, vitally important though that is.
Yeah, Matthew, I noticed that, I mean, it may again be a very low number, that 29% of children with disabilities and illness, this is on page three again, 29% from Monmouthshire, compared with the 18% in Wales overall, that just makes you wonder why Monmouthshire should have such a high rate of disability or illness, but then, thinking about it, maybe articulate parents, whatever, I don't know, advocates that are able to speak on their behalf, it seems a massive gap.
Yes, and again, not one I'm afraid I could give a firm response to, what we see is different prevalences of reasons that the social services work with people, you know, within Monmouthshire, we have much less sexual abuse, for example, and much higher rates of domestic abuse. Now, is this because we are much better at identifying domestic abuse? So there's a whole host of reasons, and I'm not sure we know, I'm also conscious of some of this, so I'm probably sort of dominating this from the front a little bit, and may have, you know, also, with Chair's permission, whether Tracy would like to come in at any point on some of this, as actually the head of children's services and an expert...
I was just going to introduce her.
An interested amateur.
Right, Tracy, would you like to come in now? Thank you.
It was just regarding Councillor Farley's question around, are we linked to those young people that education know about, housing know about, and those sorts of things, the requirements of the local authority, so any child who is open to children's services will have a plan, that will either be a Child Protection Plan, a Child in Need Plan, or a Look After Children Plan. Within the plan will be the education attainment of that young person, as will be the health of that young person, access to their parents if they're in the care system, and, you know, maybe drug and alcohol services for the parents, whatever those needs are. So for those children that are known to us, there is a plan that coordinates all of those agencies that are involved, to make sure that we're progressing things for that child. Those children who are not open to children's services, we have the JAF TAF procedure that's continuing to be developed in the local authority, so those children who perhaps weren't at a threshold for my area of service, but had emerging needs that were getting more complex because there were several organisations involved, maybe the Police for Antisocial Behaviour, the School Concerns and Education Welfare involved, there may be health concerns about parents, those sorts of things, it then brings the opportunity to have a TAF plan, a Team Around the Family plan, to again, keep everybody focused on what those needs of that child are, to attain, you know, basic care at home from their parents, but also to achieve an education as well. Does that give you a bit of a overview?
It does indeed, thank you very much for that.
And with regard to the issue about the high numbers of young children and people with disabilities in this local authority area, in other organisations, in other counties that I've worked at, you quite often see higher numbers of children with disabilities if there's links to significant health establishments, we're not far from Bristol, which has a significant children's hospital, so sometimes families move because of the needs of their children and may live, you know, they may be just past Cardiff, there may be higher numbers just there because there's Cardiff is a near hospital, and I've just known in my experience over the years that sometimes it's to do with the resources as well for their health needs, if you've got a child that's got a very complex need, they might be nearer the hospital because of those sorts of things, so it's just sometimes I've found that has been an issue as well.
Thank you, Tracy, that's very interesting. Councillor Jones, and then Councillor Brabber.
Yeah, I'm thinking back at this year group, and I can't record any, I mean, it can be a real mix, but you're absolutely right, in terms of that performance measure, you know, 1GCSE would be an approved and recognised qualification, so it can mask a whole range of abilities and achievements, but actually, you know, for some children, particularly if they're sort of struggling, have a special education need, actually that 1G might be a phenomenal achievement, and, you know, that could mean everything to them and their family, that actually they've sat that mainstream exam, got that qualification, but yes, you are right, within that is a massive range. Yes.
Right, Councillor Brabber.
Thanks, yeah, it's interesting, you raise the, on page four, percentage of children with parental issues and domestic abuse being particularly high with Monmouthshire County Council, and again, one of the questions was around sort of why, and I'm just wondering if Tracy could answer this, why we think that is, and just wondering where the referrals come from for that, did they come from the youth service and the schools to enter into that area? And are you or how are you linking with the Domestic Abuse Forum in terms of collecting data and evidence, because I know they're trying to get an evidence framework so they can apply to Welsh Government for funding, really, and it would just be interesting if we could have that information running through.
With regard to the parental issues for families, the referrals come from a variety of sources, they may be the police, they may be schools, there may be health establishment, there may be neighbours, there may be anonymous referrals, we have had the old instance where children themselves have referred in to the local authority. As far as things around domestic abuse go, we have what we call the DAC Call, which is the Domestic Abuse Conference Call, it has significant impact on our resources within the local authority, because we don't actually find that it gives us much more information than we already had about a child, but they're trying it a little bit differently at the moment, and the police are involved with us as a Gwent-wide regional working group is involved, and I attend those as well, as those I can, and also they're looking operationally, so Debbie Davies, who is one of my service managers, is currently holding that piece of work on a regular basis with the police to make sure that we're getting the right information at the right time, because at the end of the day, if there is something that is essential that we deal with on that day, it won't get left for a DAC Call, it will get dealt with efficiently and effectively at the beginning of the day or when that information comes in, so there's quite a range of sources of the information coming through, and it's also getting the right information, because we quite often have to go back to referers, because, for example, we had a Child Protection referral the other day, just to give an example to select, where it said there were, the child had not been in school for two days, and that was a Child Protection referral, well, no, that isn't, that's an education welfare matter, but actually, when you went back to the referrer, sorry, speak better, when you go back to the referrer, it was a picture of a much bigger situation, that when you collected all that information together, it was quite concerning, so it's about people getting the right information to us at the right time, but a lot of issues that come to children's services' attention are almost always directly related to parental issues rather than the child, the only exception generally to that rule is children with disabilities, they become known to us on a support basis because of their disabilities, and are more often than not because of that rather than parental issues.
From this thing, could I make a request, I guess, that you somehow link to Rachel Linehan for the Domestic Abuse Forum, in terms of linking that data through to support what they're trying to do for Monmouthshire?
That's already in place, yes, they come to us quite often when they need information, but we will be mindful of that, Councillor Brabber.
Right, Councillor Powell, your question had been answered, has it? All right, she very kindly did it for you. Oh, very clever. All right, well, I think we'll wind that up then, if there are no more questions. Thank you very much, Matthew, for standing in for Sean, the data analyst, and, oh, sorry, yes?
Just one question on our indicators, on page 11 to 13, yeah, the ones with the crosses, you know, I think we have to be careful that these aren't picked up somewhere, bearing in mind the problems that seem to be happening in Manchester and elsewhere, I know it's nothing like that, or anywhere near like that down here, but just in case somebody looks at them and says, well, you know, I wonder what's happening there.
The key indicators that have been giving us concern over the past few months have actually now been monitored, there's five key indicators that are monitored weekly. We have worked, Matthew kindly attended a workshop with my staff over the summer, to reiterate the need and the relevance of performance indicators for staff, because nobody came into social work, being honest with you all, nobody came to social work for performance indicators, Matt can't understand this, because he sleeps and breathes this, but my staff didn't, so we've worked very hard over the summer to re-establish, it is part of their responsibility, some issues we've had around data compliance, and where we, everything's been ticked, but it's not being picked up by reports, things have not been put on the system quickly, we have a very difficult system in place that's being worked on across adults and children's services, so that performance data can be taken out of the back without it being a problem for staff, really, and I think we've seen over the last, is it two months we've been running that now?
Yes.
All of them have improved significantly, and also, the one indicator, which I can't remember, we were aiming for one thing, so I said to the staff, this is your goal, we then realised going on the performance we had, it would still leave us at the right hand of the picture come the end of the year, so I said to the staff, you're doing this much, this is brilliant, but actually I need you to do this much now, and they've taken that on, and they've started addressing that as well.
If I should add, you know, from our perspective, Tracy thinks of me as a bit of a numbers geek, but at our end of things, you know, we've just been so sort of blown away by the amount of effort and commitment that the teams in children's services have put that the teams in children's services have put into, to getting these right. Because there is a huge amount of pressure on them. And actually, I mean, the chief exec was here earlier, barely a day went by when he wouldn't have asked me, or Tracy, how are the numbers on this? You know, are we, are we getting there? And they've worked so hard, and it's so nice actually, when he comes by to say, actually, you know, we're there. That one's moving in the right direction. You know, everything is not perfect yet, but the amount of movement and effort that has been made to shift those in the last couple of months really is a credit to Tracy's teams of staff.
I was just going to say, Tracy, in, in light of, you know, what we've talked about when you were last here, that, that's testament to your leadership and, and the team, you know, how close they are. The turnaround from last year must be, you know, quite significant. So well done. And councillor Brekbra, just a quick one to wind up.
Just a kind of a brief observation, really, I just noted on page nine, how well are we doing? And when you look at the percentage of children in need achieving the foundation phase, that's, that's increased, it's got better. And with the key stages two and three and four, it has gone down. Just as a point, additional learning needs support is actually highest in foundation and reduces as you go up in school years. Is there a link? I'm not sure. Just something to think of when we're looking at additional learning needs.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Matthew, once again, and thank you, Tracy, for your input. There are no recommendations, but it's something that, you know, we'll be having, being able to scrutinise again. You say the thirteen fourteen has just come in, so perhaps it will become, come to scrutiny a bit earlier than this one did.
So we've just submitted to Welsh Government, we, we receive it back from them around, around May twenty fifteen. Most of the stuff is quite timely, but this is, this is a huge, a huge dataset, a massive undertaking for both my colleague Sean, who does a fairly amount of thankless work, and Tracy's teams, who on top of preparing for inspection next week are being chased for, for a huge amount of data around which children have been immunised, who's had their dental checks done on time. And so it's, it's a big undertaking. So there is a reason that it doesn't come to you in a more, in a more timely way.
We'll take that on board. Thank you very much. And thank you, everybody, for coming, calling me, oh, no, sorry, Hazel wants to speak. Sorry, am I?
Hello, as the voice of doom, I need to remind you of future meetings and of how busy you are. So if you've got your diaries at the ready, that would be good. Your next meeting is going to be on the twenty-seventh of November, ten o'clock. And we've got an item that was deferred from this meeting, which is the Children and Young People's Directorate Self-Evaluation. It wasn't ready to come to you for this meeting, so we'll be taking it on the twenty-seventh. We've also got the inspection outcomes for two thousand thirteen fourteen and progress for schools with intervention. That's Sharon Randall Smith. And on the twenty-seventh, yeah, and we've got school performance analysis on the twenty-seventh, as well as Matt's coming back with the improvement plan and outcome agreements. Now, given that we're going to be talking about school, school performance and progress, I'm, I'm suggesting you would probably want the cabinet member present. Yeah? Okay. That one is likely to be quite a long meeting. So if we start pre-meet at nine thirty, meetings start at ten, I'm guessing that's going to be a lengthy meeting. Your subsequent meeting after that is a special meeting that we've arranged following on from discussion at our last committee. And that's a special meeting to consider the budget mandates. Now, that meeting is going to take place on the tenth of December at two PM. At one thirty pre-meet, you'll have a budget monitoring paper from Mark Howcroft, which will actually be quite helpful in setting some of the context before you get on to the budget mandates. Now, you've got five budget mandates that are relevant to CYP. They are home to school transport, schools delegated budgets, the school music service, additional learning needs, and also the youth service. So that's going to be quite a long meeting. And at that meeting as well, you've got the whole authority risk assessment. The risk assessment, basically you pick out the bits that are relevant to CYP Directorate and you question the cabinet member to make sure that the cabinet member is taking the appropriate actions to mitigate the risks. So it's not that you have to question the whole authority's risk assessment, but the parts that are relevant to CYP. So I suggest you want the cabinet member there for that meeting as well. In January, your normal, regular meeting is on the eighth of January, and you will consider the final budget proposals at that meeting. Because there will have been a lot of discussion on the mandates, I think that will be a discussion on the final proposals that could be as long as you like it to be. But we've also had a request for you to have a look at the school's funding formula at that meeting. So rather than calling a special for that, if you're agreeable, we could take it on the eighth of January. That, that's a two o'clock. Yeah, one thirty pre-meet. And then the final thing that you need to be aware of is that we've had a request from CSSIW to table their report, which is their annual review of an evaluation of performance for two thousand thirteen fourteen. Now, this is basically a report that covers the performance of social services across adults and children. So they wanted us to try and table that as soon as possible. And given what I've just said about the workload at the other meetings, I don't think that leaving it until the new year would really be a good idea because it would be quite outdated. So they've suggested that they come to Adult Select on the eighteenth of November and that for that item, we invite CYP along so that we can actually consider CYP issues at the same time. Now, I know some of you are actually on Adult Select anyway, which is helpful. So what I'd ask really is that all members of Children and Young People are aware of that. If they can make it, then all the better. I guess a lot of the questions are going to be on CYP rather than on the adults' side. But I know that three of you are likely to be there anyway. But if others can come, then please come. That item is going to be on the middle of the agenda, so you'd need to be there approximately eleven o'clock. And it would probably take about forty-five minutes. It's the annual review and evaluation of performance for, for last year. So it's basically a review of social services' performance for the year. No, no, that's, that's Adult Select Tuesday the eighteenth. So although the meeting, yeah, November. Although Adult Select will start with pre-meet at nine thirty and then usual start at ten, if Children and Young People members just want to come for that item, they could come about eleven o'clock. So just want you to be aware of that because an agenda will come in the post to, to CYP members as well. And if you see Adult Select on it, if you look down, you'll then see that it'll say CYP jointly that item. And then the final reminder for you is the day previously, the Monday, the seventeenth of November, Julie Boothroyd has asked me to remind all members that there's a seminar on safeguarding and that we've got really good speakers to come on that, on that day. Ten o'clock, ten to one, and it's a lady called Angie who's very renowned in that sector. And we've been very lucky to actually be able to secure her attendance to run that seminar. So if you can make it, please encourage your colleagues to come to that as well. It's adults and children, it's safeguarding across the board. So I'm going to send out a reminder, a flyer to you all.
It does say safeguarding adults, we did put it down, it was requested in adults.
Okay, it, it's adults then, my mistake.
It was triggered by the figures for elder abuse, if you remember, Roger, at one of our, one of our meetings.
Well, it's, it's a seminar for all members, even though it is on adults, it's, it's for all members to attend.
Do the lay members get the invites as well?
Yes. You haven't, but you don't need to give apologies for the seminars. Okay.
And thank you, everybody, for coming. And that's the end of the meeting. Bye.